Hey guys, welcome and welcome back to my YouTube channel. I hope you guys are doing well. If you're new here, my name is Leva Rang and I am back with another vlog. So this is going to be a weekly vlog mainly focusing on how I kind of like find the balance between um just lectures and also studying for an exam. So this module, I have 3 exams. So let me just kind of explain how the curriculum works in GEM 1. So basically GEM 1 or MBB CH3 or Study of Medicine. So it's MBB CH3 or GEM 1 basically. So um what we have is that we have 3 modules in total. And the first module was from January to like April was the BCMH module. So there was the BCMH 1 and BCMH 2, which was like BCMH Block 1 and BCMH Block 2. And then we had a week of recess. And then now we're in the second module which is um CVS Respiratory as well as Reno. So this is one module made up of 3 blocks. So 3 blocks, 3 back-to-back blocks. I don't know if you guys like um were paying attention in my previous videos but I would write like an exam on Friday. For example, I would write an exam for CVS on Friday and then that next Monday I'm starting my respiratory block. So that's basically how it's been um since um let's just, we opened in April again and we're gonna close now in July and 2 weeks of recess and then come back for the third module which is also 3 modules in one. So it's GIC in the cry, New Zealanders Hematology Oncology. Let me just double check, yes. So it's those 3. So that's how our modules work essentially. And then for in each module, so you have an end of block test. For example, when you finish the CVS block, we had the end of block test. When you finish the respiratory block, we had the respiratory block test. And then now, um next week Friday, we're finishing the renal block. So you're gonna have the renal end of block exam. And then the following week, then we have an end of module exam. So you're gonna have an exam comprised of all the 3 blocks, CVS, Reno and Respiratory blocks. You can have 2, the exam is divided into 2. So there's a part 1 and a part 2. In part 1 is only MCQ questions and then in part 2 it's um it's matching questions as well as very short answer questions. So that is how our format is going to be and yeah, so unfortunately the day is leading up to the weeks before, I still have classes, I still have lectures, I still have compulsorys, I still have everything. They wouldn't have a test week, they wouldn't have an exam week, you don't have an exam, you know what I'm saying? They don't have a test week break, an exam week break, nothing. You just write why, why essentially. See, I'm at now, it's currently Friday, it's the 11th of July and I just today I had a TBL and then um I also have a quiz due at um 11:59. You have these almost every Friday except the Fridays where we're writing obviously. So it's just based on the week's content. And today the plan is to do to finish the renal lectures. So I'm still waiting for them to upload next week's lectures because they usually upload the following week's lectures on um on Friday. So I'm still waiting. It's currently 20 minutes to 4:00. I wanna go to Brown to get a quarter to prep myself for study. Um so I just woke up from a nap and I was like, why am I so tired? But really, it's like, cause I slept at like 3 AM today and woke up at 7:00, so I was sitting a bit tired. So hopefully going out, getting some fresh air will wake me up. I'm a bit scared that it might be a bit cold, but anyway, it's good, it's just in and out. Good morning guys and happy Saturday. So today I wanna go to Rosebank because I need to get new boxes of my contact lenses since they're running out. And then I'm probably gonna get some food for dinner. Because yesterday I didn't end up doing next week's lectures, I just did um this week's lectures, I'm just, yeah, that's what I did. Because also they only just released 2 lectures slides, so there wasn't really much to do but I'll just do it next week. So today and tomorrow, I'll be focusing on the cardiovasculature system. I've already done week 1 and like half of week 2, so I'm about to finish week 2. So CVS is 5 weeks. So yeah, let's get into it. Guys, I've been sitting here and I can't study, like I can't focus. Jo, 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 I don't know what to do. But it's currently 9 minutes to 11:00, it's very 11:00, I'm just gonna go and get my lunch, come back, um eat and then gonna go to Rosebank at 12:00. Hopefully I'll be coming back with the 1:00 clock pass and then I might just go to the study room so that I can take a break from my room, maybe that's why I'm not productive. But yeah, for now, let me just chill honestly because nothing's happening. Hey guys, I am back from Rosebank and I'm just gonna do a haul. So the contact lenses, they actually had them installed but because I'm taking them on medical aid, they need to confirm. So since medical aid is closed on weekends, they're just gonna confirm during the week and then they'll call me to come and collect. Meaning I have to go to Rosebank next weekend. Unfortunately. See, after that, I just went to Chlick's and then I got, I got Tabovite, I just got 3 packs of these. So one is 5 rand and help with focus. Because one thing about Red Bull, it will give you energy, it will keep you awake, but it won't necessarily give you the focus, while others might give you the focus. I don't know about the awake part, but I'm just gonna try that out. And I went to purchase Chickers. The first thing I've got is, oh, it's spilling. This way, so it's spilling. But I got this um sushi. It's, I don't know what's inside. But yeah, it's 2, 4, 6, 8, it's 8 pieces fried sushi. I'll just show you guys a better pic, but this is how it looks like. Um yeah, it was 35 rand, which is very cheap for sushi. So I've never tried sushi from Chickers before, so I'll just tell you guys how it is. So this is the egg sheet, this is the dinner that I got. I ended up deciding let's go to like KFC and McDonald's and just get this. And then I also got, got 4 pack of Red Bull. So my mom sent me my chewed pie, like things I need for studying. So I'm very, very grateful to her for that. And I also got 1 sachet of Mocha. This is literally the best. Yeah. So I'm just gonna have this one of these days. And then I got, literally, this is literally my favorite um flavor. I only get this one when I'm here, the vanilla flavor one. Yeah, my favorite. And then lastly, I've got, I got energy bars. See, these are like my study essentials basically. And yeah, chopsticks. So right now, it's currently, let's see, it's currently 20 minutes to 2:00 and I'm just gonna wash my dishes and I'm gonna take a Red Bull and go to the study room. Um yeah, this is all my day is gonna be there, so it's just gonna be study honestly. But let me pick this up and go and study. I should exercise a bit and then if they come back and their blood pressure is still high, there is that um pharmacology, cardiology, genealogy. And then the first thing that I give them is a hydrolysis, which is the type of intake we know that um how they interpret the physiology of it, but it is that. So studying is going great, kinda, but it's 21 minutes past 4:00 and I'm about to continue with CVS. And I think, not I think, I'm bending myself from using TikTok and Instagram because it's being very destructive right now. Like my breaks supposed to be like 5 minutes, 10 minutes, but I find myself being on there for like 8 minutes. So yeah, so now the only thing I'll be using during breaks is YouTube because for me honestly, YouTube is not that addictive. I can still pace myself a bit. That's what I'm gonna do, so I went upstairs to my room and I got some snacks. Hey guys, it's currently 13 minutes to 9:00 and I think this is when I'm gonna stop the study session now. I think I'm just gonna go back to my room and eat my sushi, I'm so excited. And I'm also gonna do a face mask and I'm just gonna film that for TikTok. But I was able to finish 6 lectures, I still have a lot to go through. CVS was a lot guys, so yeah, I don't know if I'll continue after eating. I have to, but I don't know if I will, I'll just see. Because I have church in the morning and I don't wanna be waking up late and all of that or waking up tired. But no, I'll just see, I'll just see. But yeah. Good morning guys and happy Tuesday. No, it's Monday. Uh yesterday I didn't really vlog because I don't do any study. Honestly, I just went to church in the morning and then came back and was just chilling for the rest of the day. Um yeah, and then today I woke up, the plan was to go to medical school at 8:00 when the library opens, but it's currently got up to 9:00 and I don't think I'm gonna go because I woke up at 7:00 but I wasn't feeling the best. So I decided to go back to sleep and woke up at 8:00. I'm still not feeling the best, like showering was so hard because I'm feeling so dizzy and so light-headed, like I'm gonna faint anytime. I don't know what's causing it honestly, because I would say I got a decent amount of sleep. I've been drinking water. So I don't know what's going on honestly. I don't think I'm getting flu because it usually starts with my throats. So hopefully um I get better because I really need to study. Um but I just made some oats now for some energy, hopefully that helps, that I'm gonna start my study sessions at 9:00. Guys, I'm not feeling well, like I'm really not feeling okay and I don't know what's going on. But hopefully by the end of the day, I'll be feeling much better. Hey guys, I am back from the clinic and yeah, now I'm feeling a bit tired. But it is currently 3 minutes to 1:00 and I'm not gonna attend lectures today. So today I have 2 lectures, it's like a normal lecture and another one, so I'm not attending today because I'm not feeling well honestly, I'm still not feeling the best. So today, it's just the headache, um my throat, I can feel it coming in a bit by bit. Quite upset about that, but I think it's fine. Um and then yeah, here my headache is like dropping. But yeah, so right now I just wanna eat, so I'm just gonna have the Big Mac from yesterday because I didn't eat it because I wasn't hungry. Like when he brought the food, I had already eaten, so I'm just gonna eat that while watching. You guys, I'm feeling so hot, like you know when you're, when you have a cold and you're just feeling hot and cold, hot and cold, exchangeably like, that's crazy. But yeah, I'm just gonna eat while watching that boom. And it's the last week of TNL Telkom Epo League and today the Jaguars are playing. I'm basically, I'm personally Team Jaguars, but this year what they did in Paoi Guan. Hey guys, it's currently got up to 9:00 and I'm on my 15 minute break. I just finished doing the lecture, I just did, like went through the lecture slides myself to kind of get understanding, using um searching words that I don't understand, concepts that I don't understand, you cannot get an understanding instead of like cramming but get an understanding. And then I also just did activity recall on my whiteboard, um just to see which terms I didn't understand, which things I don't remember. And yeah, that's really helping because I haven't been doing the basic microbiology so I'm trying to spend more time on it because it's only 2 lectures this block and the fewer lectures, the fewer questions and obviously if there's fewer questions, there's fewer chances for you to um make up if you miss a question or things like that. Because you have to pass each individual track individually. So as much as this is gonna be like an overall average, you still have to pass each track. So I have to pass pharmacology, I have to pass microbiology. That's why it's called an integrated program, like all the different fields, all the different fields are in one exam. Because last year we had like anatomy separately, we had physiology separately, we had molecular medicine separately, like different tests. This year it's like everything under one roof, so and you have to pass it individually. But yeah, I'm just gonna take my break and I'll catch up with you guys when we go back to studying. Oh and honestly guys, don't mix Tabovite and Red Bull. Just wanna give you guys an FYI, I put the Red Bull back, I'll drink it later if I still need it, but then I realized that I actually need focus, not energy right now. So I just took the Tabovite instead and it's really helping, so please get this guy. This guy, the one that makes you, makes you hit low, low, hope I'll hit low. So it's the day before the exam and yeah, so today, um yeah, yesterday a lot happened. So I came back from church and then I tried studying but my period cramps are like killing me. So I was like, no, this can't work, because I also was starting to get a headache, so I was like, let me take a nap. So I slept, it was at like 11:00, I slept and then I woke up at half past 2:00, um like got up to 3:00, so I woke up and then I did, I studied from 3 AM to like half past 5:00. So I finished um the week 1 content. I'm only left with pharmacology because there's also another pharmacology, I think in week 2, that is like more or less the same things, I'm just gonna do all of those, both of them at once. And yeah, so with week 1, I am done. I'm left with week 2. Week 3 was just last week and I made sure, that week, that week I was like, I enjoyed the content, so I made sure, so I'll just be brushing over it. This week I did it on Monday, so I still, no, when was it, was it yesterday? No, it was Tuesday, I did it on Tuesday, so I still remember it. And yeah, I'm realized that this vlog was supposed to show you guys how I balance lectures, but I kinda got sick and the plan was a bit derailed, but um thank God, I'm still able to, I'm still on track, I would say. So right now, um so again, I finished 3 and a half past 5:00 AM and then I slept. I woke up at like 8:00, I had planned to wake up at 7:00 but my body needed more rest and I was like, it's okay, I'm on my period and my body's needed rest, I'm just, just took that rest and I woke up at 8:00, showered and then, I don't know what my watch, I don't know what time it is now, but um just put my clothes in the laundry and I just made breakfast. So I'm just gonna eat this and then I'm gonna um do week 2, so I'm just gonna write out the lectures that I need to do for week 2 and gonna do that. But I hope you guys are still enjoying the vlog um and yeah, it's gonna be on everyone. Guys, a little vlog update, it's like quite a vlog and I'm taking a break. I'm gonna take a long break now for like an hour and I'm almost done with week 2. Time is really fast, guys. But yeah, I'm almost done, so just do that. But I need a break guys, like I've been sitting in my desk, I need a break, so I'm doing that right now. But things are making sense, hey? Things are making sense. I'm actually taking time to learn the concepts because one thing about me is that I prefer facts over, I don't even know what the other one is, but I prefer something being told to me like this is this, this is this and then that I will remember, that I will, like I'll produce in the exam, but then things that like, you have to make, like you have to go deep, like you have to know, like, I don't know how to explain it, but yeah, I'm enjoying it. So I'm busy catching up on the Jaguars game um because they were playing while I was um studying, but guys, this year Jaguars, yeah, no. Didn't expect that from them, but yeah, I know. I'm just gonna watch some Netflix while I eat my dinner and gonna go back to study. I think I'm just gonna open a Red Bull, I definitely need the energy, but then we'll see how I feel after eating because food does give you energy, but yeah. Yeah. Hey guys, it's twelve AM and I'm gonna call it a night. So I'm just gonna sleep and I'm gonna wake up at six, so at least six hours of sleep. Instead of the two hours I've been giving myself, guys, it's really important to get enough sleep before the test. Before the exam, like your brain needs rest to consolidate and remember everything. So I'm just gonna sleep um right now and then I'll give myself an hour in the morning to kind of go through the other stuff that I feel like I need to go through again. So yeah, tomorrow I'm writing at medical school, I'm writing the test and exam. Starts at half past eight and it's a two hour, thirty minute paper, so it's until eleven. And yeah, so it's made up of M C Q questions and then very short answer questions. And then as well as matching questions, so that's what it's gonna consist of. And yeah, I'm aiming to leave my room at like eight, so I get there like ten past eight. But I'm twenty minutes just sitting in the venue waiting for the exam to start, hey guys? I'll see what time I leave my room. But all of that will, I'll see you tomorrow. For today, let me get some rest, pray. And yeah, guys, yeah, there's so many moments during my preparation, I was like, yo, the sickness really made me be behind. I could have been done by now. I'm so behind, I don't have a lot to do, I wouldn't be able to cover it. And just in those moments of doubt, in those moments when my faith is tested, just remember who you serve. Like I was just, took a breather, um the one hour break that I had to take. I was getting so frustrated, I was getting anxious and all of those things. And I was like, no, this is not the spirit God gave me. And I was like, let me take a break, take a break from the books, pray about what I'm feeling right now. Because panicking will just do more harm than good, like you can't change anything by panicking. You might even make yourself do things faster and doing things faster doesn't always equate to being effective. Like you might even rush through things that you could miss some pretty important points. I was like, let me calm down, um let me learn the concepts, let me understand them. And in that way, I'll be able to get better outcomes. But I'll take it serious tomorrow about how the test goes and everything like that. But for tonight, this is it and I'll take it easy. So I'm back for my exam. Um, it is currently twenty-five minutes past eleven and I just got my lunch. So yeah, I'm back in my room and I'm done with the exam. So this is when I'm going to end the vlog. The exam, I'm gonna say went well. I have faith that I did well because faith is a substance of things hopeful. And they've not seen, so I haven't seen my results, I haven't seen my mug or anything. But I am believing in God for good marks. But yeah, I hope you guys enjoyed this video. Please don't forget to like, comment, share, subscribe, share with your friends and family. And please follow me on Instagram and TikTok and I'll see you guys in the next video.